Well, good evening. We will call this meeting of the Sebastian City Council to order. Please stand for an invocation given by Vice Mayor Adams and remain standing for a pledge of allegiance to be made by me.
Lord, we seek blessings on the tasks before us tonight. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Agenda modifications? Are there any agenda modifications?
Mayor, just one that's listed in under Five Alpha. City manager requests to accept the agenda as presented with public hearings to come before consent.
Okay. Everybody all right with that?
Yes.
Okay. We have proclamation for Arts and Humanities Month. Is Barbara Hoffman here?
Okay, this is a proclamation for National Arts and Humanities Month, October 2015. Whereas in this complicated world and in these challenging times, the arts and humanities enhance the character of our nation. The flash of insight that comes from watching a thought-provoking documentary or discovering a compelling novel sparks moments of joy, awe, and sorrow. From symphonies that bring tragedy to life with long bow strokes to architecture that challenges the boundaries of the world around it, these works add texture to our lives and reveal something about ourselves. During National Arts and Humanities Month, we reflect on the many ways the arts and humanities have contributed to the fabric of our society. Whereas our nation is built on the freedom of expression and we rely on the arts and humanities to broaden our views and remind us of the truths that connect us, and whereas by capturing our greatest hope and deepest fears, the arts and humanities play an important role in telling our country's story and broadening our understanding of the world. And whereas to meet the challenges ahead, we must harness the skills and ingen—how do you say that?
Ingenuity.
There you go. Of our children and grandchildren and instill in them the same passion and persistence that has driven centuries of progress and innovation. The arts and humanities provide important opportunities for our young people to unleash their creativity and reach for new heights. Now therefore, I, Richard H. Gilmore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Sebastian and ask our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our city and county. And I would also ask that our citizens know that we have an arts center here, just actually just west of the city hall, that a lot of people aren't familiar with, but it's there. Come on down.
I've been there. Thank you very much. Thank you very—thank you very much. Thank you for proclaiming the month of October 2015 as National Arts and Humanities Month. The arts are an important policy asset and prosperity generator to our county. The addition to their inherent value to society, the arts offer a distinctive blend of benefits. As economic drivers, the arts create jobs and produce tax revenue. A strong art sector is an economic asset that stimulates business activity, attracts tourism revenue, and retains a high-quality workforce. The arts have been shown to be a successful and sustainable strategy for revitalizing rural areas, inner cities, and populations struggling with poverty. As educational assets, the arts cultivate young imaginations and facilitate success in school, enhancing students' academic achievements in multiple subject areas. They provide the critical thinking, communications, and innovation skills essential to a productive 21st century workforce. In health and wellness, the arts foster physical, mental, and emotional health, aiding recovery processes and contributing to well-being. The arts can be effective tools for achieving and maintaining wellness for aging adults and people suffering from trauma, including military combat personnel and veterans. As civic catalysts, the arts create a welcoming sense of place and a desirable quality of life. The arts also support a strong democracy, engaging citizens in civic discourse, providing forums for important issues, and encouraging collective bargaining solving. As cultural legacies, the arts preserve culture and heritage, passing along a community's unique character and traditions to future generations of citizens. To demonstrate the abundance of arts and culture in our community, you only have to look at the fresh-off-the-press 2015-2016 Arts and Cultural Guide for Indian River County. This production is made possible by our 70 advertisers and by the support of the Tourist Development Council. Our online calendar, updated daily with new information, lists events by the day, week, and month. Together, these calendars are the most comprehensive in Indian River County. We have delivered a box of the guides to you for your sharing with your community. These have not been presented yet to the public. That is tomorrow night that we are going to do that, so you get a special first-time look at the guide for next year. In investing in the arts, we plant the seeds for the future and we make our communities better places to live, locally as well as nationally. The arts mean business. Thank you very much.
[applause] Is Dominic here? Dominic Durk? Come on down.
Good to see you, Dominic.
This is a certificate of appreciation award. Be it known that Dominic F. Durk has given exceptional service to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the responsibility assumed and for the unselfish service rendered to the community on discharging the duties of good citizenship. This token of achievement is hereby awarded this 23rd day of September. Dominic, thanks so much for your service.
Thank you. Good to see you, David. I would just like to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to serve my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic. Okay. Under brief announcements, we have Saturday, October 3, 2015. The Craft Club is in Riverview Park from 10 until 3 p.m. That'll be the first show, I believe, of the season. Thursday, October 8, is Sebastian's Community Night Out, hosted by the Police Department in Riverview Park. That's from 5:30 p.m. until 7:30 p.m. That's an event I think the whole family could come out to. I think they have—last time I was there, they had demonstrations with the K-9, which was great, the K-9 Corps, and they had—they just had a lot of stuff going on. I think they had hot dogs cooking, and it'd just be a great night out for the family. So that—put that on your calendar, folks, for October 8, Thursday night, from 5:30 till 7:30. Is there any other announcements? Seeing none. We will now recess city council meeting and convene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Okay, under Item A, we need approval of the July 22, 2015 CRA minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. Item B is conduct public hearing on CRA budget for fiscal year 2016 and CRA Resolution 15-01.
Move approval of CRA Resolution 15-01.
Let me just read the title. 7B is a resolution of the City of Sebastian Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA, adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, ending September 30, 2016, making findings, authorizing amendments, providing an effective date. Public hearing.
Now?
Yes.
Thank you. Move approval of Resolution Number 15-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here that would speak on this? Seeing none. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none. Roll call, Sally, please.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Okay, that's unanimous. We will now adjourn our Community Redevelopment Agency meeting and reconvene as the city council. Committee reports and appointments. Do we have any committee reports? I will just report that we had the League of Cities—Treasure Coast Regional League of Cities met last Wednesday at our working waterfront, and we had cities from, gosh, oh, I think 13—well, we had probably nine cities represented there from the Treasure Coast. And we passed a resolution which was suggested that—actually from our attorney, Mr. Ginsburg. And that resolution was that we resolved that the—our legislature should have staff prepare every—everything that staff was giving them should have a box to be checked whether it was a unfunded mandate or whether it was affecting home rule. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. And we passed that unanimously. In fact, Vice Mayor Kramer from Vero Beach said, "I think we ought to add that to our agenda and pass this and send it on to legislature or send it on to the city—you know, the Florida League of Cities." So I guess I would ask council here—I think that's an excellent suggestion for us to put that in the form of a resolution for maybe our next meeting.
Didn't we—I thought we passed that.
Well, we passed—we passed five suggestions for our legislative discussion.
Okay, that's right.
And so that was all we did. So I mean, if it's the wish of the council, we'll do that. We'll put it on.
Let's do it.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have to report. Any other reports? All right. Seeing none. We now move to public hearings. Final hearing on millage for calendar year 2015, fiscal year 2015-2016 budget. Mr. Ginsburg?
Yes, sir. I'm going to read the four agenda items, the titles of them, and then announce to you what state law requires as the first item of discussion. You've got—the first item is the millage rate for calendar year 2015. A resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a millage rate of 3.8556 mills for the calendar year 2015, allocating the same to fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, ending September 30, 2016, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. The accompanying budget hearing is the next item—I meant budget—for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2015, ending September 30, 2016, making appropriations for the payment of operating expenses, capital expenses, and for the principal and interest payments on the bond and other indebtedness of the city in the city's general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital improvement funds, golf course funds, airport funds, and building department fund, as provided for in Schedule A attached here, too. Establishing authority of the city manager to implement the budget, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. The next item is the capital improvement plan, six-year. A resolution of the City Council, City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a six-year capital improvement program for fiscal years ending 2016 through 2021, providing repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict therewith, providing severability, providing an effective date. Finally, we have the adoption of the financial policies. A resolution of the City of Sebastian, Florida, re-adopting amended financial policies governing various areas of budget and finance, as provided for in Attachment A, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. This is the second public hearing and the final public hearing with respect to the items that I just read. State law requires that the first item of business be an announcement from the city manager with respect to the percentage increase over the rollback rate recommended and the reasons for the increase, after which the public hearing. As the city manager, I am announcing our proposed millage rate of 3.8556 mills, which is 6.24 percent higher than the rollback rate of 3.6290 mills. This will provide funding for street resurfacing, set-asides for all-aborde Florida issues, continue stormwater and lagoon improvements, and allow for personnel cost increases.
I have just a few slides to kind of summarize. At this point in the game, we are at the end of the road as far as putting the budget together and presenting it, going through various hearings and discussions with the interested parties. So we did review it with the Budget Review Committee, the Parks and Recreation Board, the Planning Board, and of course, the council reviewed it back in August and also had the first reading at the September 14 special meeting. We posted the document on the web, and it's pretty easy to find if you go to the website, and you can see not only this budget but past budgets. To summarize the general fund, we have a total increase of $248,901. Most of that is for—was set aside for raises and added positions. The enterprise funds, you have the golf course, airport, and building. The golf course, the big item, is the irrigation system work that we've initiated. The airport continues to pay back the loans it had from the DST fund and the general fund, and the building department is making its last installment of a repayment back to the general fund. The special revenue funds, the local option gas tax, we do have monies allocated for street work. DST has the ongoing programs of computer upgrades, police vehicles, paying the stormwater bank note as well as the city hall bank note. The riverfront CRA, we do continue the sign and sewer hookup programs. Recreation impact fee fund, we did budget for the bike path on Brushfoot, equipment building, and community center work. We did not budget for the bleacher shields that were requested by the Parks and Recreation Board. The stormwater utility fund, we are continuing the ditch maintenance program. Getting right to the point on the millage, the rollback rate of 3.6290. We didn't feel that was adequate to fund the programs we needed to fund this year, so we are recommending the same 3.8556 millage as we had last year. A homesteaded property of $100,000 would pay about $6 a year more. A commercial property for each $100,000 would pay another—almost $26 more. To pretty much wrap it up, the—our wage opener negotiations were successful. The PEA and the PPA have ratified their contracts—or our proposed contracts. Happens every time. I have a— Get out a few more words. So the PEA and the PPA did ratify the contracts this past Friday, and I guess Saturday and Sunday's votes. We are proposing that we then proceed with increases for the exempt employees as well as the members of the bargaining unit, effective October 1. We have the all-aborde Florida, monies being set aside. We are hoping for the renewal of the DST revenue source, and we continue to struggle with providing the—improving on our services within the revenues that are available to us. So there are a few comments or a few slides by Ed Hurley—he from the Citizens Budget Review Committee, so I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Ken. Most of these you've seen before, but we wanted to get it in the final time around. Budget Committee, of course, went through the general fund. The staff increases, they were approved at the 3% level. Nothing is budgeted for canal repairs for next year. The golf course irrigation project, you all know about it, it's been approved. Indian River Lagoon funding for next year will be $100,000. Roads, $100,000. All-aborde Florida, $50,000. The CRA sewer connectivity, another $100,000. Nothing for quarter round this year that's going to go into ditch maintenance, and nothing for public safety. Okay. Property values are up 9.5%. The same millage we had last year, 3.8556, raises an additional $288,000. The 3.8556 balances the new budget. Slide we did last time that created some interest. City is in excellent financial condition. We really do have a low debt load, right around $7 million, and within two years, this building will be paid off, which is over $1 million a year. What's left are roads, canals, and I think those are the two items that are left as far as bonds debt is concerned. We have an exceedingly low sick leave and vacation accrual. In other words, that's money we don't have set aside, but we don't—it isn't required that we have a lot because we don't have a higher accrual. We have a very low unfunded pension liability, and the only pension liability we have is in the police department, and compared to everyone else in the state, ours is miniscule. We have a very, very low tax rate compared to most other cities in the state of this size. Excellent bond and credit rating. We consistently stay within the budget, as you all know, and I think we have an excellent budget process, and we have over $5 million in the kitty for that potential rainy day. Let's hope that never happens. So the Budget Committee has recommended to you people the approval of the millage rate, 3.8556. Questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this point, I will open up the public hearing and—for any public comment? This would be on the budget?
The budget, the millage, the capital improvement plan.
Budget, millage, and the financial policies. Right, all of that. Seeing no public comment, council, what's your pleasure?
I'd like to move approval of Resolution Number R-15-26, millage rate for calendar year 2015.
And I'll second that. Roll call, Sally.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
I'd like to move approval to adopt Resolution R-15-27, the budget for fiscal year 2015-2016.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
I'd like to move adoption of Resolution R-15-28, approval of six-year capital improvement plan.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Thank you. And move approval of Resolution Number R-15-29, adopting financial policies.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, those passed unanimously, and now we are on to the consent agenda because we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of.
Move approval. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes unanimously. Item number 13 is public input. This is a time when the public can bring new information or request to city council not otherwise on the prepared agenda. So now would be the time. Aye.
Good evening, Mr. May and council members, and Jerome Adams, Vice Mayor. I'd like to bring up a traffic—
Could you state your name, please?
My name's Deborah Greer. I live at 115 Engler Drive on the southwest corner. I would like to bring up a traffic issue that is ongoing. There used to be a crossing guard at my corner, and they stopped there for Pelican Island School. With the increase of development, there's more cars, and the street there, it needs a four-way stop sign. Cars continually fly around the corner. I cannot get out to my mailbox without getting hit, and I can't pull out of my driveway without someone trying to slam into the back of my car. It's not just for me. Children walk to and from the park and to and from school. It's a danger. Cars speed down Schuman, and they don't stop. They don't even stop on Engler. So I'm requesting that we either put speed bumps on Schuman or a four-way stop sign.
This is the corner of Schuman and Engler.
Schuman and Engler, southwest corner. I'm sure you all been there. You all know what I'm talking about. I almost got hit by a car yesterday going out to my mailbox since I'm the only one that has my mailbox across the street. And not only that, my mailbox was taken out three times from cars smashing into it. It's on police report. I've been living there 12 years. It's gotten really dangerous the last six years. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
I will—I'll talk to Frank about this. Frank's our city engineer, Frank Watanabe. He's also a traffic engineer. I know—I see his car out there.
Here he comes, right? His ears must have been burning.
Must have.
Come on down, Frank.
He was held up at Engler and Schuman.
Mrs. Greer lives at the southwest corner of Schuman and Engler, and she is proposing because of traffic problems there, a four-way stop there. What's your position on four-way stops?
Again, we'll look at it. We have other requests regarding always stops. We'll put out counters. Typical process under the state requirement is to do what they call warrant analysis. You count the traffic volumes, you take a look at the accident history, you look at speeding problems. We'll go out there and do a speed radar, make sure there's issues regarding speeding or volumes or accidents, and then we'll compile that and see if it meets any of the warrants for an always stops.
Okay, what it is, you'll have a—it's not a—it's not a corner. It's like a rounded corner, so they fly around the corner.
I know the situation.
You know the situation.
I'll give you my card, but we'll start the investigation, and I work closely with Chief Morris with the police department.
Okay, and also, it's just usually during morning hours and when people have to come home from work.
In your area, too, we're more concerned because of the school kids, yeah. So we were—
School kids in the park and myself. I almost got hit by a car the other day just going out to my mailbox. A lot of times, I can't pull out of my driveway, so I kind of like ride across my front lawn and kind of like go over to a sidewalk that's not there and come out on Schuman just so I don't get hit.
Again, we'll take a look at it, and I'll leave my card.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's the only way that we—that we hear anything like this, is if the public comes in and says they have a problem. And of course, I would—I would say we have the—the line that they can call—what is that? 5810111? Is that it? 5810111. 5810111. So there you go. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir. Come on down.
My name is Irving Cut, right? I got property on the corner of 510 and 63rd, right there. So I was born and raised in Wabaso, and come to my attention and noticed that coming out on 64th, right at the park in the cemetery right down there, there's a cell phone tower down there. And also, I noticed when I pull up my property address, I'm Sebastian. And I wonder when did this occur and why this occurred? Because I'm in the progress of trying to help the migrant community. We was migrant workers. We helped build this community. And right now, to me, it's getting to the point where Wabaso no longer exists. We're Sebastian. Why was that? I mean, that benefits Wabaso? That benefits Sebastian? I mean, who do that benefits?
Well, sir, I, first of all, I don't think you're Sebastian, any more than I think that people that live on the other side of the county line think they're in Sebastian either when they're, they're in Brevard County. But there's a Sebastian phone thing.
Well, I have a Sebastian right now, I have a Sebastian zip code.
Yeah.
58.
Yeah.
So I mean, so when we talk to people like, my uncle back in the day, I asked him, who gave y'all permission to put that cell phone tower, which everybody in the community thought was Wabaso? He comes to one of these meetings, talking about Bruce McIntosh. He come to a meeting, he told me that he was told we didn't need y'all permission. That's our property. And I have a map back there right now showing the boundary that Sebastian is claiming.
Well, first of all, I don't think there was a self, cell plan tower was never authorized through this board, and it probably was county. I'm thinking you're in the county, you're not in Sebastian. I mean, you may have Sebastian zip code, but I mean, we're not, we didn't ever annexed you. And, and so you're not, you're right, you're not part of Sebastian, you're, you're Wabaso.
Well, while on the county map, it shows 510 north is Sebastian. I mean, because, and then I got people that live in the community just saying, people come out to them, so you need to change the address to Sebastian, right down the road from me. I mean, this is what's going on through the community here. You know, we wants to know why this is going on. Because we can't get, I can't change my birth certificate to say Sebastian, I was born in Wabaso.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if I could make a suggestion. I would suggest that, that tomorrow, or before you leave, speak with the city manager. And tomorrow, you can go into his office. He's got maps that show exactly where the city limits are. And then he can put you in touch with the folks down at the county, if you're not in fact in the city limits, to take care of whatever issues you may have. But for you to physically look at a map and see where the, the line itself is, is probably important. And that, and he has that in his office, and that'll, that'll take care of this in five minutes for you. And he, and if, if he can't answer your questions, which he probably can't because you're most likely in the county, then he can put you in touch with the people in the county that can help you with your question.
Okay, there.
Just a quick add, and I recognize you from NPO meetings, and I know this guy is becoming very, very active on behalf of Wabaso, and thank you for that. They need advocates. So please continue doing what you're doing because it's important. The thing about it is, just because your address may say Sebastian, Florida, 329, da-da-da-da, whatever, we have lots of people like Vero Lake Estates, you know where that is, right?
Right.
Their address is, well, some of it's Vero, some of them might be Sebastian. We have Roseland residents who have Sebastian addresses, but they do not reside in the ci, they're not in our limits. So just because your mailing address says Sebastian, doesn't mean we're responsible. So the advice was well, should be well taken. Come in and visit our maps, either at the city managers or community development, and you will see, you're not, you're not going to come in our, you're not going to be in our limits. We're going to blame this one on the county.
We want Wabaso. We want Sebastian. We want Wabaso.
Or else just look at the property tax bill, and if you're not paying Sebastian taxes, you're not part of us.
That's right.
Yeah.
And if we're getting it, then that's really good on Mr. Kogor's part. He's better than we thought.
Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmen. My name is Bill Rigby. I reside at 8465. I'm at 8465 Fifth and Ninth Avenue.
My name is Audrey Rigby. I reside at 8465 Fifth and Ninth Avenue.
Two things I'm here tonight about, Mr. Mayor, and councilmen and women. I want to just pick about briefly off of Mr. Cartwright, what he spoke about briefly, and then I'm getting what I came here to talk about. Now, I understand the zip code aspect of how they divided 510, like you got zip code for Sebastian on the north side. My address would be Vero Beach on the south side. My question here tonight is that, when the interlocal agreement that Sebastian and Vero Beach was fighting for at that time, what are the boundaries at that time? Did it cease or were there any boundaries in the interlocal agreement now?
The interlocal agreement never went anywhere.
It was, it went dead.
It died.
It died.
Yeah.
Okay, now, the other thing that I'm through with that, when the redistricting came about.
Well, now, that's the one, talking about the annexation, where we were talking way back when they were talking about where we're going to annex, that interlocal agreement is what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that one kind of, just that never, it was only discussed, it was about potential, and that, it might still be on the books, but nothing, nobody annexed anything.
Yeah, I don't think we ever signed it.
No lines, no lines changed.
What, which redistricting were you talking about? The, the county commission redistricting and the school board redistricting?
Well, no, the county redistricting. My question is that, when they redistricting, was, the redistricting was part of the zip code change or just that, was it just redistricting? No one knows. Is that another thing that maybe we have to research and find out?
Yeah, I can't answer that. I don't know, I don't think it was, but I don't think the redistricting had anything to do with your zip code. It just had to do with whose district you were in, you know, as far as county commission.
Yeah.
And I believe that the school board districts mirror the county commission districts, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
I think that is correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
I would try the post office.
I'll go there.
Because, because, to me, it seems like it would be a mail delivery issue. You know, where the boundaries are, would this postal office is going to take care of here, and this is, this is your zip code. Because we, we, we don't have anything to say about what our zip code is. If the postal service changed mine tomorrow, I mean, I have to go with what they say it is.
I understand that aspect of it. Well, where's the boundary line in Sebastian, anyway? Where does it stop at?
Well, when you go down here on 512 and take a right.
Yeah.
You're out of town.
That's it.
That's it.
That's it. That's, wow.
Actually, you know, I mean, do, do yourself a favor and take a look at the real map. Because the map shows Sebastian abutting directly with Wabaso and down in the area of 510. In fact, the entire corner, if I'm not mistaken, of Barber Street and 66th Avenue is within the city limits of Sebastian. And then directly south of there, it's not. And I'm not sure if Doc's property on the, the west side of 66th is in Sebastian. It may be, but the line is a bit jagged down there. But I, I believe that you would know, you live in the city limits of Sebastian, because it's very easily delineated by structure, if I, if I can, you know, whether it be a street or something like that. And I know, I believe that, that Johns Island Golf Course that's out there, I think that's in the county. That's not even in the city limits of Sebastian. That's in the county, and y'all are south of that. So I don't think that it's, it's pretty easy to know where that line is due to structure. But take a look at the maps, man.
I'll do that. In the last, I haven't got my issue yet, but I'm coming to it. But when I went to the, what Mr. Cartwright is talking about, when he went to the tower, we know that Castle, I can't think of the name, I know it's Castle something, they own the tower. But if you look at the site location, it says Sebastian. And so that's what we was kind of.
How did that come about? In the middle of Wabaso.
It says, it doesn't say it's Indian River County, but it says, location, Sebastian.
Yeah, and they call the Sebastian inlet, the Sebastian inlet, and that's not in Sebastian either.
Right. Okay, the other thing is that, I'm here tonight about, does Sebastian have what we call the Freedom Information Act?
Of course, sure.
Freedom Information Act. The reason why I'm asking is that, and I don't want to, I'm not here tonight to put anybody on the limb or whatever, is that I've been asking for some information for about a month now, and I have not received it. And, and I'm here tonight to ask, that's why I'm asking tonight, is Sebastian under the Freedom Information, and you answered that. My next thing is that, since you are under Freedom Information Act, I've been asking for some information. And to me, it looked to me that I've been overlooked, as you may say. I came in about two weeks ago, they say they had my email address wrong. I gave them the correct email address. Someone told me that they would call me within, no, they would send it to me within 30 minutes to an hour. It's been a week. So I'm here tonight just to find out, because I do, you know, just to clarify, because I do plan to come and visit the city manager on this issue.
Sure.
But my thing is that I just wanted to know tonight, is Sebastian is under the Freedom Information Act?
We are, and I don't know who you talked to, sir.
Me.
Okay.
That was me.
I didn't talk to Sally.
I talked to Gene Tarbell.
Yeah.
About three weeks ago. I'm just going to respond because this is what happened. Bill asked for several different things relating to waste management, not waste management, but waste pickup.
That is correct.
I sent you about seven or eight emails that day, and when you said your email address to me from the front desk, I got it as Rigby something, whatever it was, Gmail. I wrote it down. It's on the piece of paper that Gene brought me that she wrote on. And I sent the emails that day, never heard another thing until the, and I think it was the end of last week, or it was the beginning of this week. You spoke to Jeanette Williams.
That's right.
And she told you she would go up and get it, and she emailed those to you that very day, and I saw them.
I have not received.
They were emailed to you that day.
I have not received.
So we did everything, we spent a lot of time on that request.
Sometimes I don't get emails from the city, Sebastian. They go in my spam folder. Lots of emails that I get, I don't get. So I don't know if you've checked your spam folder, but that's.
If you'd like to come in, we'll make you copies.
I'll come in.
But they did get emails to you two times.
Well, that's, that's what I'm here for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, then, thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none. We're now to new business. Item number 14A, approved lease agreement with Velocity, Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. Longtime airport tenant, Velocity, made a proposal to the airport director and myself. And in a nutshell, what it consists of is they would like to lease Hangar B, at least for a two-year and possibly longer, and then transfer the ownership of the Velocity production facility on the west side of the airfield back to the city, and in conjunction with that, forfeit their ground airport lease, and then lease back, have the city lease back to Velocity that, that production facility on the west side of the airport. There's approximately 15 years remaining on the Velocity lease at the airport currently. The production facility on the west side is approximately a 10,000 square foot facility, and we would lease back that facility if this transfer goes through as an approved, lease back that to Velocity at $1.38 per square foot annually, and that would, that would result in $13,800 to the airport. Velocity would lease Hangar B, which is now vacant, at $1.60 square foot annually, and that would, that would be increased up to about $2.33 if they decide to lease past the two-year limit on this new lease that we're proposing. The $2.33 per square foot number is the same number that Hangar A is being leased to La Presti Aviation for, and it's also the number that's going to be anticipated once we build Hangar C, that that will be leased for, $2.33. So I know this is a little complicated, but this Hangar B lease is before you tonight. At the end of Hangar B, in section 33, there are conditions subsequent that would have to happen after the Hangar B lease has been executed, and I'll read them for you if I may. Number one, excuse me, the title being, "By mutual assent, the parties agree that the full force and effect of this agreement is contingent upon and subject to the legal culmination of the following events." Number one, within 45 days after the execution of this agreement, which is the Hangar B lease, the Velocity production facility located at 200 Airport Drive West, Sebastian, Florida, shall be transferred to the ownership of the city of Sebastian. Number two, concurrent with item 33-1 above, A and B leasing doing business as Velocity shall forfeit the land lease between the parties dated 31 October 2000. Number three, concurrent with 33-1 above, Velocity and the city of Sebastian shall execute an agreement that will lease back the former Velocity production facility for a 15-year term to Velocity at the rate of $1.38 per square foot per year, Florida sales tax and CPI adjustments to be included. So we're recommending approval of this proposal. I will, if this does get approved this evening, I will bring back to council, probably at least by the first meeting in October, the lease that, the leaseback lease to Velocity, which we will negotiate. In the recommendation, the last sentence in the recommendation, you're authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate legal documents. I think that might be a little bit premature. I want to bring back those lease, that lease to you to make sure council is fully aware of that, of that lease, and that won't happen until the first meeting in, in October at least. So we're recommending approval of this, and I know Mr. Swing, Dwayne Swing is here this evening from Velocity. If you'd like to ask him any questions. And as I say, we're recommending approval.
And, Mr. Griffin, what, what page were you reading from? Was that Schedule A, were you reading?
Was that the conditions subsequent, sir?
Yeah.
Page 192 of 224.
Okay.
Paragraph 33.
Okay, I see that.
Just as a general comment, I want to say that it sounds really complicated until you actually look at what you just read. So I appreciate you reading that to the public because it explains the, the good parts that you might miss if we haven't highlighted them. So having said that, and having, you brought this forward to the public, I am prepared to move approval.
Could I ask, is Dwayne, are you here? Someone, Dwayne?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, could, could I ask you, could you come on down? And I've, I've got some questions for you.
If I could make a comment before we get in. There are, there's a few scrivener errors in this lease. There are de minimis, there are errors that I made in names and things like that, and that will be corrected before we execute the agreement.
Yes, sir.
Dwayne Swing, I use 200 Airport Drive West as my mailing address.
Okay.
I also live in the city.
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I'm in, in favor of this. My question, though, was initially, and as I understand it, what you want to do is expand your business, correct? And that's a good thing. You know, you've been a great tenant for a long time, and you're building wonderful airport, airplanes that are almost indestructible, I think. When an airplane and an oak tree hit, and the oak tree is a loser, you've made a pretty good fuselage, okay? So, anyway.
I got some pieces for sale in case you.
But my, my question goes to the, the building that you have now, and that would be, that would be basically given back to the city of Sebastian, and then we.
Well, it would be given, I don't know about the back.
Yeah, but I mean, you—
I would donate that building to the city.
Right, you built the building, and you're basically paying a land lease now.
That's correct.
And you would, your payments on that particular property actually would go up, I guess, or they would be—
Well, no, they would remain the same.
Remain the same, but—
With the land lease and the county taxes, it comes up—
We'd be getting more.
Yes, you will get, the city would be getting more money than what you're getting now.
Correct. And my only question was, it's a 15-or-so-year-old building. My concern was, now that we own it, I wouldn't want to do a deal and end up having to pull all kinds of maintenance on that building now that we're the owner. Okay, hopefully, that's not going to happen.
Well, as I mentioned to Mr. Griffin, the roof needs to be sealed. The big rain we had a couple of days ago proved we had a couple of leaks, but I can take care of that, and that's not difficult.
Okay, fine.
That's the only issue I know of in the building.
Okay, that was my only question.
Okay.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, I believe. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none. Roll call, please, sir.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
All right, that's approved unanimously. Item number B, first reading of ordinance O-15-06.
That's an ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending the conceptual development plan, and preliminary development plan, plat, for a planned unit development known as Sandcrest Subdivision, providing for conflicts, providing severability, providing an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance. And I just, so you know, there's a provision in this ordinance that I suggested, and we worked on with the community development department, that when we approve these things by ordinance, any change, even small ones, would have to come back as an ammendatory ordinance, like this one is. This provision, and we're going to use this provision in our future dealings with developers, to provide that future changes will be done by resolution of the city instead of ordinance. That'd be a lot more convenient for the developers, and timely.
With that, I would move approval of ordinance O-15-6, and schedule a second reading at October 14, 2015.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
14C on your agenda is also a first reading of another ordinance, O-15-07. This deals with public emergencies, and the title is "An Ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, Relating to Public Emergencies: Authorizing the Mayor to Declare States of Emergency; Providing Duties of the City Manager and the City Council During Emergencies; Providing Severability Inclusion in Code and Effective Date." This is first reading of this ordinance. I explained in the transmittal memo, when we were looking at the possible arrival of Tropical Storm Erica at that point, I reviewed the code, and there was a single sentence that really related more to civil disobedience as opposed to weather kind of emergencies. And I felt like we should have at least a basic framework in place in our code to provide some legal support for any emergency action that had to be taken, particularly if it was a weather event. So I put this together. It's brief, but I think it does cover some of the basics and provide legal support for it. These are, all of these issues are subject to council's consideration and your policy decision-making. That's why I wanted to bring it here, so there wouldn't be any doubts in the future. And the last place, last time you need to have doubts on issues like this is when you're in the middle of an emergency.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Ginsburg, the wording is, "The mayor may appoint and discharge special policemen in times of riot," all that, that's in our charter, is it not?
No, the charter is a little more general.
Okay.
And it says, "The mayor shall provide for the protection of the citizenry," or some words of that effect. This language comes more out of the state law dealing with civil disobedience.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of ordinance number O-15-07.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Is there any public comment? Seeing none.
Just a thank you for keeping this— Just a thank you for keeping this nice and short.
Yes.
Easy to understand.
Roll call?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Coy?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. And since it's not a state of emergency, we'll go on to city attorney matters now.
Nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
City manager matters.
Yes, sir, I have three things. Last week, well, about a week and a half ago through last week, we received about 10 inches of rain, and by Wednesday evening, some streets and intersections had some standing water. These flooded intersections and streets were mostly in the Highlands, west of Barber, including, let me see, Rolling Hills, Benedictine, Damascus, DeWitt, parts of Laconia and Tulip, Laconia and Tulip, that intersection, had some standing water. Also, a few streets east of Ezy. To ensure public safety, our Public Works Department put barriers up along those flooded intersections. In addition, we turned on pumps 1 and 2 at the Stormwater Park to draw down the canal water, and that seemed to alleviate the problem a lot. We also removed the boards on the Hardy Park Dam a little bit to start that water flowing a little bit better, and that all seemed to work, too. Within 24 hours, the water had receded, and I think we were in good shape after about 24 hours or so, a day or so. So I want to thank our Public Works folks. I think they did just an outstanding job. Just in the short-term outlook of this, I think perhaps that we may be on the right track as far as our ditch cleaning, because that seemed to move the water a lot faster, and the ride-arounds that Frank and I were on, that seemed to work really well, and the water drawing down fast. So once again, thanks very much to our Public Works folks.
Quick question on that?
Ma'am?
You said east of Ezy, it's west of Ezy you meant.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry, west. Item number two, "An employee of longstanding, our human resource specialist, has requested an early retirement. I have authorized a service recognition award incentive according to the formula approved by council in July of 2007." Number three, "I want to remind everybody about single-stream recycling, starting on October 1, which is Thursday, a week from tomorrow. If by chance you have trash pickup on that day, on Thursdays, there's still going to be trash pickup on that day, along with recycling." So I want to make sure everybody understands that. So single-stream recycling starts on October 1. You can start using the blue bins at that time. Thank you, sir.
City clerk matters?
Nothing, thank you.
The only matter I have is, I've had people on the golf course ask me about the irrigation system, when that's put in place, how that's going to affect play and everything, and I believe that the, Greg has pretty much agreed that we're going to take the practice hole that's between number 10 and number 11 and put that into play. So what that'll mean is that even though they're working on one hole, you will always get 18 holes in. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if I could elaborate on that?
Sure.
We did open the negotiations with Nut Construction last Friday on the irrigation project. We are waiting now for a variation of their plans, or 60% plans. I'm hoping to have a contract executed by the 1st of October, that's our target.
Okay, that's really all I had. I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that as we're doing this irrigation, they can still play around a golf, and not just end up with 17 holes. So that's all I have. Vice Mayor Adams?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Coy?
Two items. I'm going to tag a little on to the recycle, thanks for reminding everyone there. And October 1, we get to use the new bin, not until the 1st of October. And oh, by the way, just for, last time I said I'm starting to use my big bucket, I had to put my stuff out in the little buckets, because I had too much, I filled my big bucket up in two weeks. So now I know it lasts two weeks at my house for two people. My concern is, as I drive around town, I am seeing some green buckets with the lids open, full of trash, and overflowing. And there's one on Ezy Street that's been sitting out for about a week now. Waste management is not going to pick up your bucket, recycle, or regular trash, if it's open. Because what happens, when it starts going up, that trash just falls off, and it's, remember, these are automatic lift pickups now, for the most part. So when they pick that up, it tips, and the trash falls out before it's supposed to. It's supposed to fall in the truck, not on your property, or in the easement. So please, put, don't put your trash out there expecting them to lift an open lid, or a lid where it's overflowing the top. And there are several good examples throughout town where waste management just is not picking it up. So we need code enforcement to be proactive, and I'll call tomorrow, especially the one that's on Ezy Street. It's been, that trash has been sitting out there, overflowing. Oh, and Frank's nodding, going, "I've seen that, I know where that is." So just a reminder to the public. And oh, by the way, if you look at these open buckets sitting around, you will notice that part of the reason they're overflowing is because it's loaded with recycles. We get trash pickup twice a week, there's really, I don't know of a reason why. Any family, if Bob McPartlin can have five kids and not overflow at one trash bucket, in fact, he can probably go two weeks with a green bucket before he has to have it emptied. It's recycle, folks. We have to get on the plan. And now that you have a bucket with wheels, there is no legitimate excuse, unless you're handicapped, and even then, there's ways we can work that out. So that's my recycle and trash speech. The other thing I'm going to say one more time is the signage that's popping up all over the place. The deal is, folks, if a sign appears in front of your home, or in front of your business, and you did not give permission for it, whether it is in the easement or not, you may remove it, you may throw it away, you may call the person and ask them to pick it up. It is up to you, as the business owner and the homeowner, you have the right. I can't believe how many people don't realize that they think the easement is sacred space. And let me tell you something, somebody puts a sign in front of my yard, it's going. You're going to have to put me in jail. I don't care. If you put it in the easement, it's coming out, it's going in the garbage, and I'm throwing it out, I'm destroying it when I throw it out. It's rude, crude, and unacceptable for people to think it's okay to plop these signs anywhere they want, or feel like it. And I'm getting lots of complaints about it. I'm sharing my frustration with you. It's not just political signs either, although that is the sign of the day. The other signs count, too. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I just have a question for staff on that signage issue. What is the policy with our, with our staff as far as those signs being on city property, and those signs being in the easement?
If you have time after the meeting, I'd like to, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay. I've just noticed several signs on city property.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you where they are? Because I know at least one has been removed. On, like, there was one at the Yacht Club. That one I saw removed.
Well, I don't want to necessarily get into particular signs. There's certainly one at the, on the airport property that needs to be taken care of, but I'll speak with the city attorney on that.
Yeah, I have an issue with that, too.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Of course, you get me here, sitting, thinking, and you make thoughts go in my head. So I was, you know, I was at a meeting the other day, and 211 put on a presentation, and they have a resource that's called 211 Sunshine Call, and that's for senior or disabled citizens. They can sign up for that, and 211 will have somebody that will call them every morning, kind of check on them, hello, how are you doing? Because they had brought up at the time is that, you know, they had a person that they had called every day, and I guess the lady had fallen in her tub that, the night before. And the only thing that helped her get through the night was she knew that 211 was going to call her house, and when 211 did not call her house, well, she didn't answer the phone, she knew that they were going to send help on the way. So it's just, you know, another resource. I know we have the volunteer police department that will make checks on, checks on snowbirds that are away, or also elderly citizens, you know, they can go by and check on. So that's just, you know, one great resource. And then to get back to what Mr. Griffin was talking about, you know, with the water of the last week, you know, I was constantly on the phone with him, seeing where we're at, making sure we could handle all the water. And, you know, when I heard before about the Freedom of Information Act, I mean, that goes, you know, to Sally, I think we have the best staff anywhere. I mean, they answer the phone, whatever you request, and I'm sure it had something to do with a bad email, because I check my email, some of the mail is going to my spam folder, but unless I check my regular hard drive computer, it, you know, I can't see my spam on my iPad or on my phones. But to get back to the water is, you know, again, I'm driving around, and I have these thoughts in my head, you know, some I have to quiet down, others, you know, I just let them come out. You know, and I was thinking about the water situation, and of course, I called Joe, and it went to voicemail that time, but then I called Sally, and of course, she listens to me. And I was talking about, you know, utilizing the resources we have and create a YouTube video on how a proper swale works, also how to show where a swale does not work, the proper way to maintain a swale, and the proper way to maintain the quarter round, around the city. And that would be for residents, Barbara and her staff could go out there and film it, and Frank would have his staff with the script going on, showing this. And as well, there could be a link to the city website, as well as the 581-0111 call, because I'm sure they got a lot of calls during the rain, during the rain. If that was there at the beginning of the answering machine, hey, if it concerns your swell, please go to the city website and check out our YouTube video on how swales should work, and how you can properly maintain. If it's not that, please leave a message at the beep. So that was, you know, just one thing, and again, like I said, is we have a great staff that's receptive, you know, they don't just tell me, hey, that's nutty, we're not going to do it. You know, they're receptive, and I think it'll be done. But I think that's what we have to look at. We have a lot of resources here, not stuff that costs money, that we can do to benefit the residents. Because I'm sure, you know, people don't understand how swales are supposed to operate, and they think they just have standing water, and there's a problem. As well as if they have standing water, you know, of course, we put out, you know, call mosquito control to come, you know, do the spraying, because they've been around the neighborhood, I know, and they can also drop the tablets to kill the mosquito larvae, or whatever they're called, in that standing water. So that was just one, but then again, I just want to say how, what a great staff we have, you know, and I'm very appreciative of all their efforts, and their, you know, their responses to actions, of course, that are brought to their attention. Nobody brings it to our attention, there's nothing we can do about it. And then finally, the last thing is, I was down, I was at one meeting this morning, then of course, I was up at the Indian River Mall today, and the Drug Abuse Treatment Association, in accordance with the school district, and also, you know, I got involved in the committee, they were holding their Indian River Has Talent. Okay, so they had one two weeks ago at the Gifford Youth Achievement Center, and they had today's at the Indian River Mall. And today, actually, and I mean, the level of talent that we had from students all over the county, and we had several from Sebastian that were there singing, playing instruments, and I'm talking, they could make the hair stand up on the back of your neck. And actually, Wesley Davis was a judge today, and he was speechless by this girl who came up and played the piano. So I mean, the final is going to be October 24 at the Vero Beach Performing Arts Center. And this is going to be children from all over the county, there's going to be 20 finalists, and they're going to be competing for a prize that has them an appointment with a talent agent in Orlando, as well as backstage passes to Disney World. But there's going to be extremely talented people that we have in our community out there expressing themselves, because again, this is stuff that the children brought before— Because again, this is stuff that the children brought before us, that, things that they wanted to see. So if you can come out and support that event on October 24th, tickets are $15 for adults, $7 for children, and I'm telling you, they'll just knock the socks off of you. And all the proceeds go to benefit drug abuse treatment for teenagers in our community. That's all I have.
Okay, that's great. With that, we are adjourned.